Best know that you'd like to talk and then that way we can get everybody covered.
Some people may not know how to chat. You might explain that. Matt, do you mind?
I would be more than happy to explain that. So in the top right corner of the screen, you will see a little chat bubble. You'll see four icons at the top and one's a little chat bubble. If you click on that chat bubble, a side screen will pop out and then you'll be able to at the very bottom enter a question or text or anything you'd like.
And Andy, we do have a question. It says, Melissa says, I've heard that FCHS will be a block scheduled daily now instead of only twice a week as before. Is this true? And if so, will coach still be offered and when?
The block schedule is correct. As we try to look at, you know, stopping movement in the hallways and around and to allow us to just to have cohort groups stay together. Where coach occurs, I don't, I'm not sure. We could ask Mr. Ahouse if he's on. I know that if not, we'll get back to you and make sure that we have that answer.
Yeah, there's sorry. There's still plan for coach. I don't know if that was me. I don't know what happened there. Can you hear me?
Yep. Thanks, Mr. Ahouse.
Yeah, block scheduling will still include the coach period.
This might be a good time to remind everybody to mute their microphone if they're not speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Sprout.
Okay, any other comments regarding our agenda or any other questions?
Yes, we do have another question. Mackenzie Newby asks, has Franklin considered doing hybrid? Students alternate days in person with online learning. This would lessen the amount of people in our building at one time.
Yes, we're looking at a variety of options and that's really why we're here tonight. Back on the 29th of June, when we unveiled the original reentry plans, it was with regard to Indiana being up to level five and everything. So we wanted to hit pause and make sure we had all those. And I will tell you, the building principals this week are looking back over their plans and making suggested changes. We're going to continue to get those run back through the health department. And then just so everybody knows that next Thursday night at 6:30 or 7:00, we'll set the exact time. We're going to have another board meeting as we travel forward to to approve the newest reentry plan. So I think I do appreciate that comment. And I will tell you, yes, we're looking at a variety of options and hybrid is one of the considerations.
Thank you. D. Straight also wants to know if we have any plans to get thermal scanners to take temperatures similar to what some employers are doing?
Not at this time. We have talked about temperatures and we were kind of told that it really the return on investment because although that is one of the symptoms, it's not the only symptom. And so we're going to look at the totality of symptoms we move forward. But no, we don't have any, any plans right now to do thermal scanners.
And also Jay had a question on masks. Jay, did you want to type that or unmute and ask?
I would like to ask or kind of publicly and say what I've already spoke to superintendent. And that is, I have asthma and allergies and I do have some issues now and then wearing masks. And so I hope that there will be some type of grace working with younger kids as they get used to wearing them, especially ones that have a breathing issue and the kids and their parents either one want them or they want to go to school. And then the other thing is, is that also, I guess a side comment or question was, the governor made a comment about, about saying at 4.5 and that schools shouldn't really be worried about reopening, even though we're not back to stage, we're not to stage five yet. Is that? Is that anything? Does that change anything? Does that bring about any comments or concerns of what was said today on that?
Regarding the mask, we're going to, we're going to talk about that in just a moment as we, I asked the board to approve a mask requirement for our district. We are looking at having a waiver put in place for some of those kids that may struggle with that. And I've asked Jim Scott to come up and help us draft that. And we do have that and that'll be part of next week's reentry plan information. And then we are going to continue to monitor that. But, you know, in terms of the governor saying, you know, 4.5, for us, it was a matter of moving the school back to make sure we thoroughly looked at our plans and it continues to follow our guiding principles of systemic improvement and making sure we're making the best decisions for Franklin schools. And that's what we're doing right now. So I appreciate the governor, but I will saying that, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be concerned. But I will tell you, we're concerned about everybody. We want to make sure our plans have a chance for success. And we want to grow our kids to their fullest potential. We want to keep, you know, the community and everybody safe as we can. But as Dr. Mormon has said repeatedly, we realize that we can't stop the virus from coming into the building. Our job is to ensure that we do everything possible to mitigate it and then take the appropriate steps. And that's why tonight, one of those things you're going to talk, we're going to talk about benchmarks. And what, what will we use to, to help us with those decisions? Cause I know the community wants to know like, well, Dr. Clint Dinning, how did you decide that? It's, I heard someone say, it's almost like the ultimate snow day. Well, this is more than an ultimate snow day. This is something that's going to impact a lot of us for a long period of time. So we're going to make sure that we have all of those steps in place with the benchmarks. And we're going to talk about those in just a few moments in the superintendent's report. But I'm going to be confident next week. I'm confident now that we have put together some, some outstanding plans to mitigate, to allow us to grow kids and to have a learning environment that is safe as possible. And we're going to continue to focus on that as we get, as we get towards the school, school year.
Dr. Clint Dinning, Susan would like to know, what would mask breaks look like? Would the students stay inside or be outside?
Mask breaks would be outside. You know what? I think as you turn and looked at that social distancing requirement is one thing we're looking at. Dr. Warland's going to report on the virtual learning here coming up and the numbers that we have. So that will be one thing that the place where we're going to see our masks come off most often is outside. And, you know, ready to do recess and different things. And we're going to try to get outside as much as possible. I'll tell you that. That's one of the things in our plans. Like, let's get out there. Let's, let's create that learning environment away from the inside and outside. But that's where I think you'll see some of the masks come off most frequently in our school district.
We have a couple of questions about athletics. With the recent change in IHSA, are students still required to be onsite learners as opposed to virtual in order to play sports?
We just had about a two hour conversation about this with Mr. Harris, Mr. Doty, Mr. Sewell, myself. One of the things we're looking at is doing what's best for kids and doing everything possible. Right now, what we're saying is that yes, you need to be onsite, but we also want to provide opportunities for mom and dad. Sometimes that's just not possible. So we're giving them the chance to talk to Mr. Ahouse or Mrs. Holman and Mr. Harris, who's the middle spotlight director, Mr. Doty, the high spotlight director, and look at those things. There are going to be some times with regard to being virtual that they have to do things with us. And C9 is a good example. You will not have to attend our school for the core classes and you will have to go to C9 because that is actually a state requirement. Right? There's no wiggle room out of that. It's 51% at least in person to get your CTE. So that's not athletics, but it kind of all goes in together. So what right now we're saying is, yes, we still want to be virtual. But if there are those cases, we are going to look to, to provide mom and dad with an opportunity to tell us and we'll kind of work with them on that. Mr. Harris, that we talked about for sure?
There's a question wanting to know if we are one of the school systems who is waiting on a state supply order that the governor spoke of today?
We are not. Ours are in, in our possession and we are ready to distribute them both for faculty and for students.
And is that in reference to masks, Dr. Clint Dinning?
That is part of the PPE requirement from the state where they purchased 3 million and we were able to apply. Mr. Sewell did a great job of getting those and being one of the first ones to submit the information. So we do have that. We also have the hand sanitizer that they talked about in delivering.
And it looks like the last question we have right now is from D. Straight. She said, based on the state of Indiana's website, currently the incidence of COVID-19 in Indiana is higher than it was in April. At what point does it make sense to go virtual 100%?
That's a good question, Dee. And then that's what we're going to hear to talk about to help us get to the metrics. So I really appreciate that. And I will tell you, we're going to continue to come up with that. And I, and next, next week, I'll definitely have some more definitive answer. We kind of work with the board, but yeah, we're looking at the same data, right? We're looking at the same thing that says, dang, that, that COVID trend line is definitely going up and not down where we thought it was back in May when it was really declining. So I don't have a definitive answer today, but I will tell you the metrics will help point us to that answer.
All right. Thank you.
Right. Let me open up for the board if there's any board members that have a comment regarding the agenda tonight.
The only thing I would like to say is I just would like to thank Mr. Ahouse and his team for a splendid graduation. I know it wasn't just Mr. Ahouse, but there certainly was a lot of people and I appreciate it, given the difficulty of where we are. I'm glad we were able to pull it off safely.
Thanks for that, Brian. All right, let's move into the, the next agenda item, the superintendent reports. Dr. Clint Dinning, we'll let you start off with the virtual learning.
I'm going to pass to Dr. Warland. She's been monitoring and creating the path for us for this. So Dr. Warland, an update, please.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Virtual learning, I want to start with thanking all of those who participated in the enrollment process. And I know some of you are on here this evening. I wanted everyone to know we had 3,505 responses. So in essence, that's one response for every student. 69% of our student population participated. Thank you so much. We can't make decisions unless you're collaborating with us and engaging. So we really appreciate that. 15.9, again, that's 15.9% of the respondents are interested in starting the school year in a virtual environment. And again, some of you I know are on here this evening because I've communicated with some of you. The design, again, just as a reminder, and this is on our website, K through six will be in a virtual space delivered by Franklin Community Schools teachers. We will be using the same curriculum we're using onsite in the classroom, wonders for English Language Arts and everyday math for mathematics, in addition to science and social studies and those other classes you would have if you were in the building. Seven through 12, those students will be receiving information, their curriculum, or I guess curricula, so many classes via Apex Learning's digital platform. It's a platform we've used at the high school. So we are familiar with the platform in the district. We have staff who are familiar with the platform. Franklin Community Schools teachers, both at the middle school and the high school, will be working with students who are in those spaces to answer questions, monitor exams, and assist students with progress through the courses. A couple of things, pointers that I want to make with regards to changes that, that have happened since we posted the original document. And Dr. Clint Dinning referenced one of them earlier. So students who are attending C9 in person may enroll in our virtual environment. So if you're at the high school and planning to attend C9, that option is now open to you. We will be incorporating more educators, more teachers into the virtual space as our numbers dictate that need now. So we will be sending out more information about instructors for those courses. If you are a student at the middle school or the high school, someone will be reaching out as we get closer to the start of school to talk with you about schedules and what, what types of courses or what courses you want to take or start for this semester. If you are in, in a position where you are unable to respond to the enrollment form, feel free to call the central office. Robin, if you will, maybe stick that number in the chat box. It's also on the website as well. And we will ensure that, that if you want to enroll in that virtual space, we add you to our numbers. So again, thanks, everyone.
Sorry, couldn't get it off mute. So let me deviate from our plan there and stop there and offer up if anybody has any questions for Dr. Warland before we move to the next item.
We do have a couple of questions. Has it changed that band and choir is allowed with virtual learning, Dr. Warland?
No, there have been no changes to that component at this time.
And Alicia, feel free to ask your question.
Dr. Warland, do you want us to fill out the enrollment form if we're unsure? Because I think when I looked at it initially, it seemed like it's a either or. And I, at this point, we're not sure about our kiddos.
Great question, Alicia. The enrollment form is actually closed. We closed it actually Tuesday morning so that we could start using the data. I didn't want the data fluctuating all the time because I do think we had some that were in the same position you were, just struggling to decide. Once you decide, Alicia, go ahead and call or email me or call the central office and we'll enroll your children wherever you want them enrolled. If you have other questions, feel free to reach out and we can talk more about those as well.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
All right. If there's no other questions, then we'll move on. Dr. Clint Dinning, your at-home learning.
I'm going to send it back to Dr. Warland. She's had a series of parent meetings and teacher meetings. As we look to the future with, as we've talked about, the numbers going up and different things, that we may have to go back to at-home learning. So she is shepherding this for our district. So Dr. Warland?
Yes. And I'm smiling because I know some of you are, are thinking we've got virtual and at-home learning. And it was, we actually had that conversation today. Some of the teachers and administrators and I, the conversation around the language and the need for clear language. And if you're following what's happening at the state, the Indiana Department of Ed, they're having the same conversations. And so when we talk about at-home learning at Franklin Community Schools, we're talking about prolonged period of online learning, similar to what we experienced in March, April, and May. It was a prolonged period of online learning for the district. So I'm going to start with thanking the 42 parents. And again, some of you are on this conversation or here at the meeting tonight who were able to attend one of the three parent meetings. And then I also had four teacher meetings. So I'm going to thank those teachers as well who were able to engage in those conversations. And then I met with a group today to look at the, the feedback we received and try to make some decisions. So again, to all of those who've collaborated in this process, thank you. That's the way we improve. That's part of our systemic thinking process and, and that key guiding principle of collaboration. A few key themes that emerged, and I will be very brief. I won't go into many details here. But one of the common themes in all of the conversations, I would say, is that we need more engagement between our students and their teachers. Not just the video, not just an activity online, but really that, that exchange like we're having here tonight where you can see faces and have a conversation. And I would also add more engagement between students and each other. Lots of concern about isolation and this sense of just, just being disconnected. Clear, consistent communication came through, I think, at all levels. Communication is one of those key things that we need to work on. I feel like in everything we do, every process we undertake. So we will continue to work on that at all levels. Some consistent organizational parameters around Google Classroom. And I know that Mrs. Holman, for example, at the middle school is already working on this. Her teachers have been engaged in this conversation. And we're looking at key ways to structure Google Classroom so that parents don't feel like when they jump from one course to the seventh course, they've changed learning systems. And so we're, we're looking at some of those things, both at the middle school and some key parameters that are consistent across the district in the event you have children in multiple schools. That was a common theme, some confusion around, around the learning management system. And then also clear expectations. What does it mean to be a student learning from home? What does it mean to be a parent working and learning alongside your student while they're at home? What is the role of the teacher and the role of the parent? And so great conversations. Next steps, very quickly, we are going to take the feedback from parents, teachers, and the group today, refine our at-home learning experience, send that back out to our administrators, our principals, instructional coaches, and teachers to get an additional, just another vetting of that design. And then as Dr. Clint Dinning said, when it comes if and when we reach the point when according to whatever parameters or decisions we make here over the next few, few weeks, starting tonight, when it's time to implement and transition back into at-home learning, we will then rule out those steps. As part of this process, we are looking at additional PD for teachers. We started working on some of that today. And really more resources for families, instructional videos and some things we can do to ease that transition. So thanks again to all of you who engaged in this, this feedback loop.
Dr. Warland, also, could you talk to us a little bit about the guidance the state gave recently with regard to the blueprint and engagement as we travel forward?
Yes. And this was a conversation topic today as well. The state has done some really great work recently in providing resources for districts and what it means to be engaged. Engagement does not mean we are on a screen for five hours, K through six. Engagement means we do need to look at that, that state required time of five hours, K through six. There's a six hour time, seven through 12, but that means we're reading and we're engaging with our teacher or our classmates or involved in an activity or doing a variety of different things. And we're going to look more deeply into that, but we are not asking your child or our students to be on a screen for hour after hour.
Thank you, Dr. Warland.
So let's pause there again. I'll offer up an opportunity if there's any questions for Dr. Warland on this topic.
There is. Talking about if and when a shift to at-home learning happens, Jason asks, what about families that won't be able to leave work to be at home when that happens district wide?
Jay, do you mean at that point in time or for that prolonged period of time?
Well, kind of both because that was kind of even mentioned by the governor today, kind of in, in point to a couple of the school systems that have already announced that they're going to be online only at the start of school, whenever that begins. He pointed out how they, I guess, at least for Washington Township, they even announced that they're not even going to do any daycare for the families, which has put the kids, the families in a bind. Because unlike April, unlike March, yes, we have a little bit higher rates, but the hospital rates is going, is still down thankfully. But families are not at home. So we don't have a parent that's going to be always watching unless they have to take the chance of losing their job. And so, you know, and that goes for any type of family, two parents at home or one. So, and it's really more difficult on the one. So is there, are we looking at what can we do to maybe do what the governor asked, didn't say it had to happen, but asked? And that is to make sure that there is some type of facility for kids to be able to go to and do their at-home learning with still a person watching. I know that kind of defeats the whole purpose of sending kids home, but that's going to be a problem if not every, we don't have a shutdown like we did in March.
Yeah. And Jason, actually, it's interesting that you say that because one of the things we've talked about, if we don't have a shutdown, that means we can still use our buildings. And we've talked about that before. There are opportunities for us to potentially do some things in the buildings if it's safe for us to do that according to the metrics that we have. We've had some conversations about Cub Care and what does Cub Care mean? And how do we design at-home learning so that it can be flexible and still allow for that time to engage with, with teachers and students? So you're asking a question I think many of us are still trying to figure out and ask, and it's a really important one. And I think connected to why some schools are looking for ways to make better decisions because we know there are ramifications for families.
And when you say shutdown, are you talking about shutdown in that when the state says the school has to shut down? Or when the state says, okay, your jobs were back to stage three, we're back to stage two, and your other jobs, whatever it may be, are now shut down? Which, because there's two different versions of shutdown that, that I think you might be talking about.
And maybe I was just referencing the language that you used, you used, Jason. So I was trying to pick up from where you were from earlier in the year.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you. So we'll move to the next agenda item. Thank you, Dr. Warland. Dr. Clint Dinning, how about metrics on reopening?
I'm going to take this one with the help from my friend, Mr. Sprout. Before we get there, I want to talk just a few minutes about how I made the recommendation to the board and the decision to move back the start of school. There were several factors that went into play as this information was breaking. You know, I was watching the governor's announcement last week and, and he kept us at, at level 4.5. There were a lot of factors in there that, for example, the, the 250 persons in gathering. Well, the only school that could have existed under that would have been Union as we travel forward, because all of other schools are, are large. But I know that, you know, he said, well, if you've had it approved by the local health department. But when we looked at it, when I looked at it, both with the integrity and with looking at our community, I knew that we had those moving forward with level five and not level four and a half or level four. So that was one thing I wanted to, to look at. We were sending, seeing the virtual data moving very fast and deep in terms of student enrollment. When we initially, about a month ago, asked parents, what are you considering? It was right around 10% that we were seeing that, that of our parents saying, we're going to consider virtual or do virtual. When we actually went to enrollment, it went to almost 16% as Dr. Warland just articulated. Well, if you look at 16% of our student body, you know, that's going to be over 600 students, you know, as we travel forward. That's a big number as we look to make the appropriate adjustments for class size and class enrollments and different things. And we need to make sure we have the teachers in place. We still need grade instruction to take place virtually in a virtual domain. And the third one was, we did talk to our teachers. We've had a great conversation throughout COVID and throughout the years that I've been superintendent with our teacher association. And I appreciate, you know, all the way back to, from Jane to Heather Kepner and now Tony as presidents. We've worked well together to say, how can we move forwards a district? So we did poll our teachers and our staff and said, how are you feeling about coming back? And we had a very large number. We had 736 people respond to that survey, which is almost all of our staff. We have about 800 people that would qualify probably as, as our full-time staff. And over 70% said they were somewhat disconcertedly concerned about coming back. So we needed to make sure that we hit pause to say, did we do everything possible to ensure a safe environment? And with that, it allowed us to then to say, can we push the start of school back? And so working with collaboration with the board and my administrative team, I made the recommendation to move it back to the 17th to allow us to review our plans, to make sure that to make sure that we articulate the benchmarks. Because that was one of the things I felt was missing some, you know, although we knew them behind the scenes as we were looking at some stuff, the community wasn't really aware. Dave, how are you making these decisions? Pull them out of your hat. You're just talking, Dr. Wharton, what are you doing to, to make these decisions? And so we want to make sure that we have those and so people could see them. We also wanted to make sure that we consider a variety of options. You know, as Jason has talked about with regard to students, we know that there are some vulnerable populations. And when we go to at-home learning or virtual learning, it is hard. The school's hard, school's hard. The best instruction is with the teacher that's been trained and leading and growing kids. And that's our, that's our individual student growth. I had someone ask me the other day, has the mission of your district changed since COVID? The answer is no. The mission hasn't changed. We want to grow kids to their fullest potential. But we need to make sure that we're doing everything possible in that systemic improvement, which is another guiding principle. And that's why we moved it back to where we are today. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Sprout to take over the share screen. And then we're going to take off the agenda for just a second. And Mr. Sprout's going to pull up another computer screen. And in the chat bar, he's also, in just a few minutes, going to put in a URL address. So Mr. Sprout, you want to take it over from here and just walk us through what we're doing? And then I'll go back to the definitions.
I would love to. So hopefully my screen is coming up here. I'm looking for it. There's also a link in, oh, if I can get there, a link in the chat session I just put in there. And what this is, if you've got your phone, feel free to scan the QR code. If you're working on your computer, feel free to click on the chat and use that link. What we're going to do is take a moment and answer five questions. Dee asked earlier, how do we know when we're going to go to 100% virtual? And you're going to have input on that tonight. Dr. Clint Denning is very candid in creating this survey. We were asking the five questions, do we take the data back and process it and think through it? His answer was no. Let's be candid. Here are the answers. So as you answer these questions tonight, you're going to see exactly the responses that people get. So i- if everybody's there, can I get a thumbs up? So I know that, that, okay, I'm getting a lot of thumbs up. That's a good thing. So hopefully you're on a pole and everywhere. And I'm going to start with the first question. So go ahead, Dr. Clint Denning. Okay.
Go ahead, Matt. Sorry.
So the first question is the 14-day COVID trending data. When we talk about COVID trending data, it's not just one per, one aspect of the trending data. It's all of it. We didn't want to leave something out or give one higher priority than that. So as you start thinking of the criteria, the 14-day COVID trending data, and you can see those numbers going, yeah, the 14-day trending data, well, how important is that? Is that a little bit important or is it extremely important? Is it a very significant factor? So go ahead and choose that radio button if you haven't already and then click on vote.
Do you want the board to vote or are we just getting input from the community?
No, please, board vote. Everybody. So I'm hoping to see 81 votes on here. So if we can get 81, I did notice it went a tick higher during the voting. So that, that's a good thing. We get a lot of input. So we'll, I'll give three. If you haven't hit vote yet, go ahead and hit that.
Matt, I also wanted to say like, when people say what's trending data? And that's all of the information that we have both from the state and local looking at COVID with regard to, to our school district. Similar to what the governor's doing in terms of making decisions. But we're going to look at all of that data. And so it's not just like one element or two elements, but it would be all of that from hospital to, you know, what's happening in ICUs, what's happening across the, the infection rate and those different things. So we'll look at all that. It's not just one piece. I want everybody to understand that. So it looks like we're getting close to getting there. We have 64 votes, so we'll get just a second more for everybody. And then what Matt's going to do is he is going to kind of let us see what that looks like. So 26 people say, you know what, that should be strong decision factor. 19 say very significant, 14 say it's moderate and seven say it's a weak factor. And so now you're saying, okay, Dr. C, what are you going to do with this? So we're going to go through all five questions and then we're going to take this information back. And next week, we're going to then talk about, okay, how much of the decisions are going to play of the factor we're going to have? So when Dee says, hey, when are you going to, and I'm, Dee, thank you for asking that question. That's why I'm bringing it back up as, as the person asking it. But when Dee says, hey, Dr. C, when are you going to tell us we're going to be at home completely? We're going to say, listen, based on the information and these factors, that's what made my decision. So with that, I just want to say thank you for everybody for, for weighing in on that one. Okay, Mr. Sprout, number two.
Question number two, performance against Indiana indoor air standards. So fresh air. And so as we consider that as a factor in our decision, is that a weak decision factor all the way up to a very significant decision factor? So go ahead and click your radio button. Make sure to hit vote. It doesn't count unless you hit vote. So. We're catching on.
And I would also just say, yeah, the CDC, this is also one of their recommendations. If you look from their guidance, they say fresh air is, is an important factor. So that's one, people say, well, how'd you get some of these? These are really coming from a lot of sources and conversations from experts in the field and the recommendations.
All right.
We're back to 60 votes.
We got two more votes. Last time we had 65, so we may have two people refraining here. One more. All right, we'll go ahead and go with that.
All right. So it's strong decision factor. All right. So thank you.
So moving on to the next question. In-school cleaning cycle performance, you'll know from media, wash your hands, keep everything clean. Use sanitizer, use wipes. So as Mr. Sewell and his whole team look at the cleaning cycle, how important of a factor is it that in-school cleaning cycle performance?
Thank you, Mrs. Betts.
Well, I'm not sure. Oh, we have one. I was waiting for one category there. We seem to be in pretty strong agreement here. Let's find out where we're at with that. We've got two more votes to come. Oh, we have more votes. So here we go. Let's see what the outcome is. So by a large margin, it is a very significant decision factor. So thank you for your input. It almost doubles everything else. Great information. Next question, and this is kind of, we came up with this question earlier today and then the governor made a statement. So it, it may not make this statement moot, but we'll ask it anyway. Compliance with FCS mask standard.
And Matt, can we hang on just a second? Dr. Clint Denning, there was a question about the cleaning performance. Laura wanted to dive into that a little bit deeper. Shouldn't the cleaning performance be a minimum expectation? Or what's the difference here that we're talking about?
Laura, can you jump in for a second and just kind of help, help me with that?
Sure. I, my question is related to the cleaning performance. I guess I would expect there to be a cleaning expectation that should be met daily and that a decision shouldn't be made based on cleaning not happening. So that, that question was a little confusing to me.
Okay, sure. Thank you. I'll, I'll try to answer that and then. So one of the things that we know people are asking is what are you going to do to make sure the building is clean differently from the past years? And what did you do? Did you, did you add staff? Did you, did you do something different? So one of the things we are going to do is set up similar to what you see in restaurants or something like this area was cleaned at this point in time and gather that data up to help. And we are actually increasing staff to, to support the building levels to clean. And we've also purchased a product that can be used through a sprayer and a dispenser that will go on the hard surfaces, it can be wiped off. And also, and then if a student were to get it in their mouth or ingested, it would not hurt them because it's also used in oral surgeries. So one of the things is to look at, look at that as, as a factor. You know, as COVID continues, you know, maybe absences or something like that impacts cleaning and to that weigh into our factor. So hopefully that helps address what we're meaning by cleaning standards. It's a little bit above and beyond.
Here is another question. That really is unrelated to whether schools should be our whole, we're answering these questions. And the premise is whether schools should be in-school or at-home learning, correct? And, and these factors are the factors that will weigh in on your decision?
Now, thanks Amanda. I should ask, the answer to that is, is not all, not all, not always will it be weighing in. Should we be in or out of school? We might be in school and says that we're monitoring to, to stay in school. Or we're monitoring it to, to adjust to what we're doing.
Gotcha.
So these are benchmarks that'll help us with that. Uh, but I should have, I should have clarified that beforehand. These are benchmarks that we've used, but I know people were saying, how do you make that decision? So these were the ones that have come up with and, and I, you know, if there are others, the very end will ask people to, to send those in and we can also talk about that with the board. And then next week, we're going to come back and say, okay, listen, here's what everybody said and they're weighed in on that. And this is how we believe is the most important factors for us to help make that decision. Similar like my snow days example I said before, you know, I get up at four in the morning and drive. And then I talk to the other school districts. And then I look at that, you know, safety in terms of a two-hour window, make a difference or not? And really what it comes down to is can, you know, that drive is the most important thing. I don't really care. The other schools are great, but really I worry about what we can do. So that would, that's how that weighs in. So very similar. Hopefully that, Amanda, did that answer that to clarify?
Yes, this is Joey on behalf of Amanda.
Okay, but thanks, Joey. All right.
Dr. Clint Denning?
Yep.
Somebody I saw pop up as we were addressing this question, the FCS mask standard. What is the FCS mask standard?
Yeah, that's a good question. So right now what we're saying is K to 12, that you're going to wear your mask throughout from time you get on the bus, entering a building and also in the classrooms where you cannot socially distance. Obviously, if the kid's outside, we're not wearing our masks, similar to what the governor said today. And we're also going to provide that waiver opportunity that I mentioned with Jen Scott. And you'll be working with Jen Scott, the Director of Special Education, the building principal and that. But our standard will be for also for staff to wear a mask throughout that journey. Well, we all have masks. If you went to graduation, you saw Mr. Ahouse and I had our mask on as the, as the kids traveled up to, to meet us. That'll be a very similar expectation of what we're doing as we move forward.
All right, well, we have 62 responses on that and a, a, a strong feeling of very significant decision factor. So, thank you. Next question, compliance with other, other COVID rules.
Before, I want to, I want to talk about this one, Matt, before anybody.
I was going to go for it, but you go for it, sir.
All right, we'll tag team. You go first.
So, no, you take it. You got it.
When we look at compliance with other COVID rules, we're talking about our rules. An example would be we've asked parents to please self-monitor your students. So you, you quickly go through that list to say, how are they feeling? Do they have a cough? Do they have an earache? Do they have a fever? And please don't send them in. And how many people are complying with that rule? How many people do we have when we look at our attendance rate? You know, right now our attendance rate's at 20% before we have to call the health department. And so what does that look like? Is that in compliance with that? Are we able to socially distance and keep apart? Are we able to continue to wear masks and get masks in? Those are examples of compliance with our rules into this COVID era. Matt, anything else on that one?
No, thank you, sir. So we'll give that just a second. We've got 43 votes in, so cast your vote. All right, it seems like we reached a lull, so we'll tally the votes. Very significant decision factor, compliance with other COVID rules. So what you're saying is it's very significant that we continue to follow the rules. This is the last question. You got an A, no matter how you answered, because you participated. This was definitely a community event. You know, Dr. Clint Denning's been very adamant about trying to get input. And this was one of our, one of our ways of doing that. Thank you.
We're also, and if anyone has an additional factor, you say, hey, would you consider this? Either use that FCS communication or type it in the chat bar right, right there and we'll get back with you. And then next week, when we meet next Thursday, we will share the benchmarks and hopefully clarify anything that's missing on how we're making that decision, how I'm going to make that decision to move forward. Either at home, in our present state, you know. And as you've seen on this journey, there's been a lot changed. I mean, two days ago, the CDC just changed their recommendations for schools on students with COVID. And what, what I'm being told now is if a student or adult in our buildings test positive, they are going to be out for the two weeks. And then when their symptoms subside after that and they're fever-free for, for 24 hours without Tylenol, they can come back to work. Well, that is a significant change than what the CDC was just saying a few weeks ago. So that's why all this thing is continuing to be up in the air and, and, and we're going to continue to be both flexible and nimble in our decisions and move forward. The benchmarks will help us in that journey and the community will know that. So thank you. You do not have to test negative before returning back. That was one that was taken out of the CDC. In addition, I was also told that, let's say that, you know, your family, someone in your family gets it and another person gets sick, they're going to say, everybody's got it. And so now that two-week window is going to go into effect for the entire family. One of the things I would just implore everybody, we're going to continue to educate you, but please, if you're not feeling well, stay home. Please stay home. We've done away with perfect attendance. We've done away with incentivizing people to come to work if they're feeling sick. We want everybody to please honor those rules. And that's that compliance piece that we, it only goes back to that trust, that trust factor for all of us. So that's where we are and kind of continue to, to look at that and moving forward. So Mr. Lam, are there any other questions about this or next step so I can?
I'll look to Mrs. Betts. Did we cover all the questions in the chat?
We actually had quite a few. Back to the cleaning, we had a couple of questions about UV lighting, cleaning procedures after hours. Is this something that we've considered?
Mr. Sewell?
I did look at that technology and we evaluated it. There's, there's a lot of worker safety components to that. And it's, it's quite expensive. And as we looked at making sure that the options we chose were versatile and flexible for us and could be applied easily, including during the day, we decided that the misters and foggers option was the better option for us. So we've made a substantial investment in that equipment and in that sanitizing agent. And we believe that's going to allow us to do a, a really nice and safe sanitizing job that is, that honors the safety of our staff and, and, and the students. And it's, and it was the most cost-effective one that I looked at.
Thank you. A question for the high school or I guess any school where students change classrooms throughout the day. Will desks be sanitized between students in each class? Or should students bring their own supplies to take care of that before they sit down?
There are a lot of students and a lot of desks and a lot of classrooms. And we simply will not have enough staffing in the midst of every, every class transition to, to do that sanitizing every time. So we will need some help with that. We are going to equip every classroom with a supply of the sanitizing agent. And so the teachers can help us with that to kind of target that. But we are not able to guarantee that there will be a sanitizing step every time a space is occupied by a new student. I mean, there's lots of, lots of examples of, of objects that will be touched by more than one student between sanitizing steps. We are going to sanitize much more frequently than we ever had, have. But there, there's, there is a limit to that. If you want your student to have a freshly sanitized service every single time they sit down, they would probably need to have some of their own supplies.
All right. And then a few quick questions on masks. Can the masks be homemade?
Yes.
Yes.
And will students be required to wear masks outside at recess?
No. If they, as long as they can be socially distant, I think that comes back to, and the governor even said like strenuous activity. Um, and you know, we're going to continue, we'll, we'll define that next week. Right now, if you can be socially distant and you're outside, we understand. I mean, and, you know, we know the kids are going to bump into each other at times and stuff like that, but yeah, that's where we're headed with that.
And this may be something that you'll address next week in the plans. But um, just moving forward to winter, how will we facilitate mask breaks in the winter quarter months?
That's a really good question and we will, we will look at that and I will try to address that, if not next week, but in the future.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think the
Laura, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. We can go to that. Will the kids have an opportunity to take mass breaks? Do you want to touch on that again?
Yes, we will. We'll definitely be taking mass breaks. Um, we'll ask the teachers to go outside. Also, we'll can socially distance them uh, away to, to give that opportunity, but yes. And then we will continue to, if parents have a question or they feel like their kid, their child comes home and says, hey, you know, I need some help. Continue to get back with uh, the building principal and uh, Mrs. Scott on that.
Um, and then this last question, it says, last week you mentioned the poss, we could possibly close one school and not others. Is this still the case? They were just curious with the new survey data.
Yes, absolutely.
And then do we have mask requirements for band and choir?
Yeah, actually, study just came out two days ago uh, with information from uh, and guideline recommendations. It was for choir that they wear masks when they sing. Um, and the recommendation uh, on the band side from, from the study was to put some type of mask at the end of the bell where the sound comes out. And so we will look at that. Um, I know um, Mrs. Holman and Mr. Ahouse, I don't think they addressed that directly yet. Or um, Dr. Warland, have you chimed in on that one yet either, on the curriculum side? No.
No.
Yeah, we'll have an answer next Thursday for you on that. That's a really good question, but that's what the recommendation is if they wear masks. I would say choir, you can guarantee they're going to have them on. Cause that's one of the places where, you know, the droplets and you're projecting out from your, your, your diaphragm to sing, we will have that on. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Also on masks, if I can say one more thing about this as we head to the mask policy. We are going to have some masks for students and for teachers that have uh, see-through areas with Plexiglas. So that uh, the kids that need to be able to see their lips being read or to, to um, understand how to make sounds and phonemes. We're going to have that available both for student and teacher. We're having some people locally uh, make those. And so that will be something that we'll continue with the parents uh, and the teachers with as well. And to get that so that we can ensure just that the highest quality instruction.
And have we talked anything about face shields um, versus masks?
Mr. Sewell, do you want to weigh in on that? Have you been doing the research on that for us?
So a, a conventional face shield that is open to the bottom and the sides is not effective at containing the aerosols and droplets that, that you breathe out. So they're not considered a direct substitute for a, a facial covering. I have seen um, postings of some hybrids of a face shield slash mask hybrid that has like a um, a veil that, that closes that gap. And so I think those would be acceptable. But uh, a, a conventional uh, face shield is not equivalent to a facial covering is my understanding.
Um, there's also a question, if the kid's mask begins breaking down the back of their ears, can they wear hats with buttons? Laura, you might want to jump in and explain that better than I did.
Sorry. No, I just know that there's an issue with um, masks, you know, breaking down the back of people's ears. I've had that issue, so I had to wear a headband with buttons to put my mask on. So will kids be allowed to wear something like that to help alleviate the rubbing and stuff from the, the mask loops?
Absolutely. And then we also have uh, a, a local person making 3D plastic um, holders that go on the back of the head. And it has different levels and you can then hook it to the mat, you can hook your mask to the, the 3D plastic holder. And we'll make sure that those are available also.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
But there, there are also, there's a, you know, I'm sure you've seen, there's, you know, tie straps, there's loops, you know, elastic loops that go around the back of your head and neck. And so if the ears, uh, you know, the ear loop options don't work for you, find, find one that's comfortable to wear. And get your students uh, used to that now as we, as we ramp up for school.
Yeah, we, she's been practicing, but I just care certain, I mean, the tie ones aren't going to work for my third. Ways to keep masks on.
Dr. Clendenning, can I add something?
Yes, Mrs. Corrick.
So my daughter is an EMT and obviously as a first responder, she experiences that kind of breakdown on the back of her ears. And she just has these little strips of cloth, you know, they're just a, a few inches long with a button on each end. That she can just put across the back of her head to connect um, her mask to. And they're, I mean, it's pretty easy to make. I mean, you literally just have to cut a piece of fabric and, and put buttons on those. And then she can wash them. So that's a pretty easy fix too. And um, she's appreciated that. Just another option. I think there are a lot of options out there.
So I think I just heard is Mrs. Corrick said in all of her free time, she'll make button. Is that what everybody else heard?
I do not sew. That is, that is a misconception, I believe.
I'm just, that's fine. That's, thank you for that suggestion.
All right, any other questions?
Uh, we do have one more. Jeff, um, Mr. Berry is asking, what's the data source that we're using for the ineffectiveness of face shields? Um, that retailers are using them and there's kind of a mixed message being sent on their effectiveness.
Uh, that, that's simply um, looking at CDC guidelines about facial coverings.
Thank you.
I would say we'll continue, just like I said, we're going to continue to monitor that one and we will, if, if information changes, we'll get with everybody as quickly as possible, like we run out. So thank you for that.
All right, any other questions?
Not at this time.
Thank you. So we'll move to the next agenda item, the action items. The first uh, item we have around our policies that needed to be updated uh, as we work in this COVID uh, environment now. So as they relate to the board meetings, uh, the way that we send out agendas that, that we notify the public.
I would ask for board approval. I have upon the second, we're reading, uh, as a reminder, we did have uh, Mr. Wagner and Mrs. Warland. I sit down and review these. Um, it does just provide us the, the ability to be nimble and make decisions. And then move forward, we're bringing back for, for final board approval, but allows us to do that. Also it addresses the FMLA uh, for our faculty and staff. If something happens in COVID where they receive COVID, what they, what they need can do uh, to make sure they get the appropriate care and time off that they need. So that's what we're uh, seeing in these policies today.
Okay, for the board, any questions for Dr. Clendenning or, or Mr. Wagner on those policies? Do I have a motion?
Move for approval, please.
Thank you, Brian. Brian Wagner, how do you vote? Brian, you with us? Do you vote? Christie, how do?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Becky. And I vote yes, so the motion passes. We'll move to the next item, which is the uh, mask requirement as we follow the governor's guidelines.
Yes, thank you. Um, last week, when the decision was made to keep us at 4.6 and also looking at the survey data um, from our teachers and look at what can we do to be proactive? It was uh, the decision to bring forward to the board uh, the mask requirement K to 12. And so this time I would ask that the board approve a policy that requires uh, wearing a mask for both students, staff and faculty and administration at all times, uh, unless they can be socially distant.
Any questions from the board to Dr. Clendenning on that? Do I have a motion?
Um, this is Christine. I'll move for approval.
Thank you, Christie. Brian, you with us now?
We're here.
Thank you. How do you vote?
And Clark, yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Clark. Becky, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Becky. Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion passes. Uh, last action item is our re-entry plans.
Yes, one of the things that we talked about in, on the June 29th meeting was to be able to be nimble and flexible with our entry plans. And that we wouldn't always be able to come back to the board and, and ask for approval before we could put something in action. So we were just going to have that kind of as a lagging indicator to the board. Um, under counsel, we've been advised that, you know what, let's go ahead and approve those plans. And then what we're going to put inside of our board agendas uh, from today forward, we'll have consent agenda items with regard to approving any changes uh, to our plans so that those are board approved. And there'll be no questions that, you know, that Dr. Clendenning or Dr. Warland or someone just came up with these and did them on their own. The board would approve those. And so tonight I would ask that we retro go back to June 29th and approve the initial uh, Franklin Community Schools and uh, school and district plans.
So Dr. Clendenning, uh, one request, actually two requests. One, if you would go and on these documents, uh, put that date on them. So we have revision control that is we have multiple opportunities to approve our entry plans that we can track which ones we're, we're voting on. And then the second one for me is a, a question for Mr. Ahouse, if you're still online. Um, I think that uh, is the changes that the governor has and um, the athletics. Um, I, I just asked that we make sure that the document that's linked in that re-entry plan is up to date to the latest um, requirements as far as social distancing. What uh, what uh, use of our facilities uh, in that, that we're clear on, on that.
Yeah, we can, we can match those things up. Um, right now the, like the IHSA hasn't really changed much of their position, but certainly we're, we're changing. So um, so we'll definitely make sure that those two things align.
Thank you. I'll open up. Is there any questions or comments from the board on, on the documents?
So these are the ones from a month ago that we already talked about. Nothing's changed since then.
Yes, that is correct. Nothing has changed.
Got it.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve these uh, these documents?
This is Becky. I move for approval.
Thank you, Becky. Ryan and Clark, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Christie?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes. So these, these documents with the revision control would then pass.
Thank you, Mr. and Lam. And we will, we will make sure that. And then so next Thursday, um, and we will have uh, the agenda posted on Monday night or Tuesday morning with the revisions for the community. Uh, and we'll make sure that it's quite clear what we're changing from the June 29th.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, then we'll move into uh, item seven on the agenda is our public comments. So there's the opportunity, uh, if you have uh, comments relating again to any of the topics that we covered tonight or any topic that you wish to address, um, I'll allow two minutes uh, for you to uh, to share that with us. Please uh, again, use the chat. Uh, this, this time here though, we would open up that uh, you don't have to type in your comments. Just let uh, Mrs. Betts know that uh, you're in line waiting to talk.
Okay, it looks like first of all, we have uh, Mr. Scott who would like to say something.
Thank you.
I appreciate everybody's comments and what you guys were brought out on the differences between masks and face shields. But there is quite a few things and different, and it would be nice maybe from the school to have maybe, hey, this is what we found. This is why we decided this. So that the parents will have a better understanding and maybe more comfort with what the decisions have been made on those. Uh, case in point, face masks, yes, it's to delay or, or shorten the spread, but it's not to keep us from getting it, is one of the comments. So people think face shield should be a fine requirement, especially for those of us like me that have a breathing issue sometimes with face masks. And so um, that's where the face mask option to me needs to be really looked at. Because it is, it does deflect. It keeps it from going forward. Yes, it doesn't maybe to the side, but it also doesn't restrict the flow of fresh air to the persons that it has a breathing problem. Just throwing it out there, just maybe before you guys discuss, think about, and maybe put something together and say, this is what the school system found. These are our sources. And so that, you know, that, that at least does maybe keeps from any arguments going or, or limits the amount of arguments going forward. And that's it.
Thank you, Jay. Open up for any other comments?
Um, we have a couple of comments um, that just say that they hope we are making every effort to start school in person. And then we also have a question that says, if a student is sent home from school ill with COVID-19, how do we handle the cleaning of the classroom and other students in the class?
Mr. Sewell, would you cover that, please?
Yes, so if the um, I think first of all, we, we wouldn't have an immediate diagnosis. Our, our nurses are not able to diagnose. So we would ask uh, the parent to take that student home uh, that's not feeling well. But I don't know that at that moment, we would send everyone in that classroom home unless there was maybe a really strong, compelling um, set of symptoms. So, but, but we do have the ability to clean, we would, we'd have the ability to go ahead and clean that classroom. We would take the students out of that classroom, go ahead and clean it. Um, and use the sanitizing equipment that we talked about earlier to um, to address that. And then we would immediately be in consultation with the health department on appropriate next steps for the, the rest of the class and, and the staff members. And, and again, the um, everything about our day is structured around minimizing the mixing that's going to happen, maintaining social distancing and, and minimizing the mixings of, of those groups. So uh, we have multiple uh, layers of, of, of preventative measures in place as we, as we travel forward with that.
All right, and Mr. Berry would like to comment about IHSA.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Berry.
Uh, Mr. Harris, speaking on behalf of the athletic department, tell us what you're hearing from the ISHAA in terms of their information with regard to sports.
Um, absolutely, Dr. C. Um, right now they have come out and said that they are, we've moved to phase two on July 20th. And um, that we're continuing on the process that they laid out about a month ago. And they have not sent out any new information to give us. Just keep on moving forward as far as, as far as that's, that's concerned. But masks are on kids coming in and out of our buildings and walk into training sessions and just try to do the best we can.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
I can add to that, I mean, they made a statement that said at this point. Not on the table. They're still planning to move forward and, you know, all those guidelines.
And at this time, Mr. Ahouse, I believe we've had no test positive, is that correct? Since once we started picking back up, Mr. Harris?
That's true at this time, yes.
Thank you.
What was the question, Dr. Clint Denning?
Oh, Mr. Doty, hello. Student, we've had no student test positive, correct, for COVID-19 since we began on the 6th of July?
That's correct, but we have had a couple just today say that they have symptoms. So we've asked them to, to isolate and then given them, given those parents the information that they need to have their student return to athletics.
Thank you.
We have another question that asks if the testing will fall on the parent only, will there be any testing done onsite at school?
I think it's important to remember that if someone has symptoms or is known to have been in close contact with another person who has symptoms, the CDC guidelines require 14 day exclusion period regardless of whether there's a test or not a test and whether the test comes back positive or negative. And that has to do with the fact that there is a, a range of incubation periods from a day or two up through, the 14 day period is intended to address the full scope of the possibilities there. It averages out, I understand from talking, talking to Dr. Morning, Mormon at about three to five days is, the average is in there somewhere. So we are not going to have onsite testing. At least that has not been an option for us at this time. So, but again, it's kind of, it's kind of irrelevant to the process of screening and excluding students and staff members.
It's my understanding that in September, we are scheduled to get more testing. And that is going to be from the Duncan County Health Department through a grant from the state of Indiana. And we'll have more information about that as we head into August. But that's not until September.
This is, well, if you don't mind, I have a question. Really just curious because things are continuing to change. And I think that you guys are doing an outstanding job of communicating and holding meetings and sending emails. And I personally appreciate that. But as things continue to change, how or do you have a plan for keeping parents in the loop with the different guidelines based on the school or the CDC? Or what does that really look like moving forward at the end of that school year? Assuming that we will be onsite, please, please, please.
We will release our communication plans, everybody knows about that. One of the things that's been successful for the internal technical groups that I've been holding, you know, weekly updates. And then during the first phase, it was every day I would talk to our staff. And we're going to get, I'm going to get ramped back up to that. And we're also looking at maybe using that YouTube once a week. That I would talk to everybody, but also through newsletters that the building principal put out. But we will, we will release that communication plan. I'll have that for next week, Jamie, that's a great question. And I know Mrs. Betts probably are thinking about how it's going to play out for us, but we will get that for everybody to know and markdowns as well. So thank you.
Well, and at this point, a lot of our communication has really been district led. But we are now starting to phase into utilizing other expert sites to share more educational and informational information. Today, we just shared a small thing on social media about mask care and guidance. So we're going to start sharing a lot more of those resources leading up to and throughout the start of the school year. So thank you, Jamie. We also have a couple of questions about students who are ill. So I'm just going to ask them both at the same time. One is what, what happens if a student is sick but doesn't get tested? And then on the flip side of that, do we have a policy for students who are just sick or a stomach ache, but probably not COVID related? Are we requiring doctor's notes for those students to return?
That's a good, great question.
Unfortunately, the COVID, you know, if you, if you walk down through the list of COVID symptoms, nausea and diarrhea and headaches and running nose, there's, it's, it's down the list, it's things that are easily explained as, as other causes. And that's going to be a real challenge for us. As I mentioned earlier, our, our nurses are not doctors and they're not in a position to diagnose. They do make some, some judgment calls, I suppose you could kind of say informally. But if, what we're going to ask folks to do is use the CDC screening guidelines. And, and that, that is going to dictate a course of action. And then if you, you would be able to go to a doctor and if the doctor determines that there's another, another diagnosis that's not COVID-19 and they release you, we would look at that and consult with the health department about how to manage that. But you, you bring up a tough scenario because there are a lot of symptoms that are, that are common to other ailments.
Jeff, I'm going to chime in for a second. I see another question on here about what about a common cold? Are we wanting students to stay home for a week or so to recover from a cold? So currently, the guidelines that, that is what I would like to communicate to parents is the COVID symptoms are your common cold symptoms for the most part. So in the event your student comes down with one or more of these symptoms, it is a 10 day minimum stay at home. You can go to the doctor and get a diagnosis. So say it's strep, you start on the antibiotic, you can return before the 10 days. But if you just want your child to stay home and recover, they cannot return to school for 10 days. And then they have to be on day nine, would have to start their fever free, symptom free for a minimum of 24 hours before they could return. So I hope that answers your question, Melissa.
And Mr. Brian knows that was, that is, Mrs. Martin, and she is the Director of Health Services. She's, her job's going to get ramped up this year as we travel forward. So thank you Amanda for sharing that, that was awesome.
And Dr. Clint Denning, if I can piggyback on that, this is Brooke, this is Dr. Warland. I think as we're having this conversation, just to connect with Amanda's comment and also with Mr. Scott, Jason, your comment earlier about family and if we're in the at-home learning environment. I think as we're talking about the school and the planning that we're doing for the district, I would encourage all of you, I am a mother, I have two children in our district. I need to be planning at home as well. What is my plan for my children if someone becomes ill? And my husband and I are both working and we, we need an alternative. We need an option or we need help. So I would encourage all of you as, as family members, community members, do, do your planning at home as well as you're doing those self-assessments and, and monitoring yourselves and your children.
Dr. Warland? Address how a student who is in a 10 day exclusion period might still be able to engage in their schoolwork?
Mr. Sewell, was that for me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, you cut out or I had a couple of people talking. Was the question if they're out for 10 days, how they still engage in their schoolwork?
Still be some opportunity for them to engage their schoolwork, would you talk about that?
Yes, absolutely, great question. There would be a couple of things happening, right? It's possible that a student is out for 10 days and the student themselves, the student is sick. Well, if that's the case, then please, the student needs to focus on their health first. And then we will, we'll focus on the academic piece and the integration back into the, the learning environment. If the student is home because someone else in the family is ill and they're able to still engage in academics. If your student is in a virtual learning environment, they will continue to engage in that virtual learning environment as appropriate. If the student is in the building onsite and they're absent, they will manage that academic, that continuum with their classroom teacher or teachers, if they're at the high school, just like you would now. And our teachers know that, that if a student is absent from their classroom, they will continue to engage with you, the parent and the student the same way we do, we do now. Jeff, did that, did that answer the question you asked me?
May I help somebody with that question?
Great.
Dr. Warland?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
That, about the, about if your son or daughter comes down with COVID and you have to miss work, as long as the state is technically in an emergency that was stated today, that was brought up today, your work should be protected. You should, there's, there's other things that you need to apply for, but you should not lose your job for going home because your kid is sick or is needing to be quarantined to see if they have COVID.
Great, great, thank you, Jason, for sharing.
And Brooke, or, yes, so it looks like, we may have touched on this, but I want to just make sure it's out there for parents. Students will not be penalized when they have to quarantine, correct?
Correct, absolutely not, Robin, thank you.
There is another question that says, if people are within six feet for 15 minutes or more, regardless of a face mask, they're considered a close contact and should isolate with anyone with symptoms of COVID-19? Or should be isolated, sorry, and presumed positive. Is that part of our plan as our desks do not seem to be quite six feet apart? And another parent commented that that would also be the same case with our bus seats not being six feet apart.
Mrs. Martin, you want to weigh in on that one?
So if I'm understanding the question correctly, I believe, and I, you were cutting out a little bit, Robin, so I apologize if I am not answering this correctly. But my understanding is that once we have a positive student, we will be contacted by the health department and we will initiate contact tracing. And so the students that would fall within the six feet, more than 15 minutes, they will be notified by probably more than likely the building nurse or myself. And then we will initiate the process of what that looks like. So it will be done case by case, individualized. But yes, that is, that is the guideline that we will follow, six feet for more than 15 minutes. Was there another piece to that question?
No, I think that, that answers both, whether it's in the classroom on the bus, the state department of health will initiate it and then you guys will follow up.
Yes, that's correct. So we'll, we'll trace the positive student their whole day for a few, you know, for, for a few days to see who they came in contact with, so.
And then this one, I think, is probably the question of the century. How are you planning to keep enough subs to cover all of the staff that may be out to keep student, or keep schools open? Dr. Clint Denning?
I thought we were going to take everybody that signed in today and say, yes, you can sub for us. Actually, that's a really great question. And that, that will tell you where, when we ask you about compliance with all of our rules, the subs are actually going to be embedded in there. One of the things we know that we really can't do this year, and that's double up classes. You know, in the past, if we didn't have a sub, we could, we could double up and do some things. That can't happen. So we need to get subs out. I will tell you, I think one of the things that might help us with subs, the universities, as they're making their decisions about going online, I'm hearing a lot of the students that are going to be freshmen or maybe choosing to stay home. So we're going to be actively recruiting some of those students to come in and participate with us and, and make sure that we have as many subs as possible. We're also hiring people through the CARES Act, and those are classroom assistants. And, and they know that one of the things that they're going to be doing is possibly going in and being a substitute teacher when we need those. And those are, depending on the building, anywhere from four to one persons to have subs. So we are making some of those plans, but we, we're definitely going to need more people. We have had a few virtual training sessions. Our lead HR specialist, Michelle Bright, is doing a great job of recruiting and trying to get people out with the help of our social media and things. So if you know of someone that, that would like to sub, once again, if it's a college student that's going to be home and they're, because of COVID impacting them, tell them to sign up with us and we'll, we'll try to get that. So we need subs, but we will not be merging classes together.
Thank you. Mr. Doty, this question is probably for you. It says, my understanding is that IHSA has a requirement for getting new physicals after a surgery. Is this simply to clear the student from the surgery or to screen out potential COVID transmission as the doctors are not testing for COVID during sports physicals?
I believe that the answer to that is yes on both parts of that question. I, I did not work to create that document that was sent by the IHSA. It's a health history update. When all this started, it was in lieu of getting a new physical. They, they sent that out in April because they knew it was going to be difficult for parents to get into their physician to, to get a new physical. They created that health history update. And if you answered yes to any of those questions on there, then they were requiring a new physical, you know, from your physician. So there were more than just those two questions. I think there were, if I remember right, I think there were five or six questions that if you answered yes to, could have been a concussion or if you have passed out, if you had a surgery. There were several things on there. So to answer yes, to answer your question, I think the answer is yes.
Thank you. Amanda, this takes, this question goes back to a little bit of what you were discussing before, talking about the contact tracing. If they find that a child was within that contact range, would they have to get tested? Would that be a requirement or how does that work?
No, they, they do not have to get tested. If a parent chooses to get tested, they absolutely can get tested. But right now, the guidelines is that they would stay home and monitor for symptoms. But they would still be home for a minimum, I believe, of 10 days at that point.
Thank you. And Jamie, I apologize, I got a little bit behind. I see your question or statement about how was, didn't it change to three feet for classroom or desk layout? Do you want to elaborate on that?
I just recall it being that it could be separated by three feet. Has that changed now to six feet? Or I, I don't feel like I'm making up this three feet rule, but I don't know exactly where it came from.
I can, I can speak to that. So I think, I think it was Dr. McCormick, the state superintendent, at one point and one of her addresses referenced the desks being all facing in the same direction and being something between three and six feet apart. Or it might have even been three to nine feet apart, I don't know. But my memory is a little fuzzy on that, but I believe that's where that, that figure originally came from. Again, that's where we are addressing that with our mask requirement in those cases where we cannot get a full six feet of separation. As we, as we have, I guess that's the end of that answer, that's, that's, that's the answer.
So the goal is to have six?
We cannot, we cannot get six feet in every classroom that with the number of students that are in our classrooms.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Amanda, there was a question on clarification between, is it 14 days for isolation on a close contact? Or 10?
Okay, so I pulled up the exact wording, so I will just go ahead and read it. So if an individual becomes symptomatic, the individual must quarantine for 14 days after the contact with the COVID-19. A positive person, even if the student has an alternate diagnosis for symptoms. So I'm going to try to put the link in the comments. So anyone who has questions, they will have the most up to date. I just received this this afternoon. And then also Jennifer Nevins had asked if they do a test, can they come back if it's negative? And that is, you can. So if you opt for a test and it comes back negative before the 10 days, you can return to school.
Great, thank you.
Is that, Amanda?
I'm sorry, what?
Is that a recent change?
Yes, I just got it today, this afternoon. Yes, I just got it today, this afternoon. It's ever changing.
Ever changing. And Dr. Mormon said that today when I spoke with him, that the CDC has actually changed just yesterday
Okay.
testing to symptoms and some other clarifying facts, like one example, one is the fever used to be 72. Amanda, you want to talk about that, that new change? Or do you, so Dr. Mormon told me we went from 72 hours to 24 hours Tylenol free after the, the 10 day period.
Yes, that is correct. So before today, it had to be 72 hours. So around day seven, your student would have to be fever free, Tylenol free, symptom free. Well, now they pushed that back to just 24 hours. So they could still have a fever on day eight, but as long as day nine, they're fever free, they could come back to school on day 10. So which that is how our guidelines have always been written. We've always been a 24 hour fever free, symptom free. So that's kind of reversed a little bit back to the way we were. So that, but that just changed. So I apologize, I misquoted the 10 and 14 days earlier, but there, there's a lot of scenarios that they give us and it gets a little confusing every once in a while. But there's another question about if a child tests positive, do they have to have a negative test? No, but you have to be symptom free before you can return. So it'd be for 24 hours. But, you know, they, and that's a new change. Before these updated guidelines, you had to have, I believe, two negative tests before returning to school. And now they've changed that to just, you have to be symptom free for 24 hours and 10 days. You do have to wait the 10 days. And it can see, so no matter what, if they're positive or negative, they must stay out of of 10 days. That's correct. Unless you get a diagnosis. So let's say your student has strep, you start an antibiotic and your healthcare provider says you can return 24 hours after starting antibiotic.
A provider will accept the.
Have a diagnosis. And as long as you fit the other guidelines, fever free.
Amanda's breaking up unfortunately, so.
That country living.
Yeah, so we can get, we can get her comments back and post those out on Communication FAQ or whatever.
Yes.
So thank. Is that it, Mrs. Betts?
Yes, I don't see any more questions at this time.
All right, open it up for the board. Any final comments from the board?
Just to say, I like the question earlier about what data are you using? What science are you using? I think that's a fair question. And I think we, we need to do a better job of identifying kind of what our North Star is when it comes to all of these moving parts. And if it's Dr. Mormon, it's Dr. Mormon. If it's the CDC, it's the CDC. But we're not in a position to debate science. And so we just need to identify what are the sources that we're relying on? And then, and then those are the sources. And I think even if people don't agree, you know, at least they understand where we're coming from. But I'm not a scientist or a doctor, neither is Dr. Clendenning or anyone else making these decisions. So we're going to pick who the scientist, who the doctor is that's going to be our North Star. And then that's, that's who we're going with. So I just think we need to be clear about who that is and what that is. And then just be absolute and, and making sure that people know that that's the source we're using.
Thanks for that, Ryan. Okay, with that, then I'd like to thank everyone for joining this evening. Look forward to talking with you next week, next Thursday, and I will adjourn the meeting tonight. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening, everyone. Stay safe.